Good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. The January tenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting of the Miura et al. Planning Commission is called to order. Would the Secretary call roll for the termination of a quorum, please?
Thank you, Chair. Chair Fisher.
Here.
Vice Chair Harland.
Here.
Commissioner Vrooman.
Here.
Commissioner Wojcik.
Here.
Commissioner La Paglia.
Here.
Let the record reflect all members are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let's now move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Wojcik will lead us in that pledge. This is good. All right.
That's good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeff Carl.
Thank you, Commissioner Wojcik. Approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Seeing none.
Call for a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve?
And I will second.
We have a motion in a second. Secretary, please do a roll call.
Chair Fisher.
Yes?
Vice Chair Harland.
Aye.
Commissioner Vrooman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wojcik.
Aye.
Commissioner La Paglia.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. At this time, we'll take public comments. Any person may address the Planning Commission on any subject pertaining to city business, which does not relate to any item listed on the agenda or the consent calendar. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the Planning Commission on any matter not listed on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Madam Secretary, do we have any non-agenda public comments?
Seeing none.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We are now moving on to the public hearing. And I think staff is going to give us the public hearing establishment of medicinal cannabis delivery location and operational standards. And I think it's Chris Tracy?
Correct. Thank you, Commission Chair. For the folks out in the public, my name is Chris Tracy. I'm a senior planner here with our Advanced Planning Division. Tonight, I'll be providing a presentation on medicinal cannabis updates consistent with state requirements. And to implement these standards, we have to adopt an ordinance locally. So first, I'll provide some background on how we got here. Under Senate Bill eleven eighty-six.
Can I interrupt you just a second?
Sure, no problem.
My mistake. Are there any members of the Planning Commission that wish to abstain or recuse themselves from this item? Okay? Seeing none, we'll move on to the staff presentation. Staff, may we have a staff report?
Absolutely.
Chris, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So continuing with some background, under Senate Bills eleven eighty-six, cities throughout the state are now barred from adopting or enforcing any regulation that prohibits the sale of medicinal cannabis to patients or primary caregivers. And second, state law allows cities to adopt local standards for permitting, location, and operational components of these types of uses. Next, for reference, the city's current limitations on non-medical cannabis businesses will remain unaffected by the proposed modifications. This includes the prohibition on recreational cannabis stores and retail storefronts. So that's for kind of some context. Also, for reference, we currently today only have one permitted marijuana testing facility that operates within the business park zone. First, I'll briefly cover what we cannot regulate. We cannot regulate the number of medicinal cannabis businesses authorized to deliver in the city, operating hours, the number or frequency of sales, the types or quantities of medicinal cannabis authorized to be sold by delivery, and then we can't ban the establishment of a physical location in the city. What we can regulate are zoning requirements, we can provide parameters for security and public health and safety, and implement licensing requirements. We can also impose or collect applicable state or local taxes, and we can provide regulations consistent with state requirements. Our proposed updates, kind of an overview here, first, we'll be updating existing terminology under our existing section sixteen forty-four two fifty, which is entitled marijuana and hemp use. We'd be providing new definitions. We'll also be providing provisions for medicinal cannabis delivery service license, application requirements, and operational requirements. And I'll go over those details in the next portion of this presentation. First, we're going to be cleaning up the existing section, as I mentioned. We'll be modifying the naming terminology from marijuana to cannabis, and this is consistent with more recent state terminology. Public nuisance violations conflicting provisions and severability will remain in place as currently written. First, on the new criteria, the delivery hubs, these are the physical locations, would be limited to the business park zone in the city. Deliveries for patients and caregivers are required to be allowed citywide, and this is a state requirement. Medicinal cannabis delivery service business can be mostly closely associated with wholesale and distribution uses, and that type of use currently occurs and is allowed in the business park zone, so this is a similar type of activity. Location is proposed to be a minimum of five hundred feet from a sensitive receptor, and I'll go over more details on what that is, or from another business hub location. Sensitive receptors, as proposed, would include residential zones, public and private schools, daycare centers, churches, public parks, and youth activity centers. And on your screen here are the areas of the city where the business park zone is located. This is mainly southerly of Miura Hot Springs Road and the I-15 freeway on the left-hand side of your screen there. The light blue is the business park zone. Those are existing sensitive receptors with the radius maps, radiuses at five hundred feet. On the right side, it's a little bit further down in that same area, closer to Temecula. You've got Date Street and the Auto Mall, kind of in that area. There's quite a number of existing multi-tenant buildings that are in that area of the city. And this is a little bit further north off of Winchester Road. This is also in, light blue is the business park zone. There's no buildings out there currently, but in the future, if that changes, this would be another option. So first, I'll go over the requirements for a delivery service license. License is required. It's required for each physical location within the city. They have to have a completed application as reviewed and accepted by the police department. They have to have proof of insurance, and it's valid for a one-year period. Some of the application materials would include a site and floor plan, a lighting plan, copies of the applicant's current cannabis license from the state, an odor control management plan, a safety and security plan, and existing sensitive use information, as I detailed previously. Some of the operational requirements from the application, you have to have an approved odor control management plan. Business activities would be required to be within the structure. Third-party testing facility of products, tamper-evident packaging would have to be provided, and the project product tracking system and record-keeping requirements have to be provided in compliance with state tracking, and there's a centralized database for that. Some operational requirements also consist of no cannabis or cannabis products may be visible at a location or from a delivery vehicle. Signs shall be, contain no advertising of other companies, brands, goods, or services. Hours of operations are as authorized by the state. Food products in compliance with state laws for edibles. Some prohibited activities, no onsite sales or pickup orders, no cannabis or paraphernalia sales, no growing, cultivating, manufacturing, or processing of cannabis, no dispensing or consumption of alcoholic beverages or cannabis at or within two hundred feet of a physical delivery hub location. No loitering shall be permitted within fifty feet of a location. Some of the screening, safety, and security requirements are as follows. No public access. The outdoor vehicle storage area has to have fencing and landscaping. It also has to be provided in a secured site access, so if you have like a keypad and some sort of security key, that would be kind of a way to get there. Surveillance systems would be required for both outside and the inside portions of the Some of the safety screening requirements are as follows also. Security retention for not less than thirty days, a third-party and centrally monitored fire robbery and burglary system would be needed, right of inspection by city personnel, and providing secure storage of products. Also ensuring that all entrances and exits from the delivery hub are locked at all times and have the panic hardware if there's a fire. Disposal requirements as authorized by the state license, reported violations to the city within twenty-four hours, and also the operator will need to designate a security person as identified to the police department in advance. Some of the operational requirements for delivery vehicles, GPS tracking of vehicles, products shall be stored in a secured safe. No product to remain in the vehicles without a driver present. Delivery vehicle shall be registered with the police department. On the in-transit requirements, only owners, operators, or employees may be present in the vehicle during deliveries, and no more than the maximum amount of medicinal cannabis is permitted to be in the vehicle under state law. All delivery drivers shall carry a valid identification card and proof of employment. They also have to have a copy of their permit and also another government-issued identification as well. All drivers shall carry an inventory log of cannabis and cannabis products that are being transported, and they have to be trained in a manner to facilitate verification of qualified patients and their caregivers. Some of the requirements for the owner, operator, employees, they have to be twenty-one years of age or greater. They're subject to a background search. Prior convictions can't be in place unless, there's some provisions that remove some of that. Owner-employee rosters and notice of change, if there's a change there, they need to notify the city. It's going to be also required to be consistent with the city's revocation process and appeal process as currently drafted in the ordinance. And with that, staff recommends the following recommendation, as identified on your screen there, and staff with planning and police are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, for your presentation. Pretty thorough. Appreciate it very much. We'll bring it up now to the dais, and we will have questions from the commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner La Paglia.
Chris, you spelled it out pretty clear. I mean, at first, I thought it was like, you know, there weren't a whole lot of restrictions on it, and then as you went further and further, page by page, there's a lot of restrictions on it, which is nice. Only question I have, on the odor control management plan, who sets those standards and who regulates that? Is that like an AQMD thing?
I would imagine so. They would have, you know, there's probably some provisions there. It would be similar to other businesses that have, you know, that generate odors. We could probably ask for a study as part of the application.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah.
I feel like that's probably the main nuisance of this product, so I think that'd be wise to do. So that's all I had. Great presentation. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Vrooman.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chris, for your presentation. Several questions for staff here. Would something like this trigger, require a CUP if we had an applicant?
No, it's a permitted use, and we're associating this with the wholesale and distribution use, which is also permitted in that zone.
Okay.
So it's just kind of, it's a similar type of activity. We do have the process to revoke their business license if needed and go through that process like any other business.
To be clear, there is a separate license that they need to have that's not just a regular business license, so.
Yeah.
There is a permitting process, but it's not a CUP.
Oh, correct. So there'd be something if, obviously, they were not a good business and they had some nuisance violations and things like that, that that could be, you know, revoked, basically for violations, those type of things like that?
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to check. Has any fee schedules been developed as far as for the licensing backgrounds? I know the, you know, typically every two years, the city kind of looks at fee schedules and things like that. Would this, would there be a separate one just for this, or would it fit into the existing fee schedule? If you know.
I think we'd probably have to create a separate one for this, so we wouldn't have that until we go to council and, you know, we get it ironed out.
If there was an applicant, the only reason, I'm just kind of looking for the police department, you know, when it comes to, you know, they're the ones going to be tasked with doing the background check, right? So, you know, their time, effort, those type of things like that, so the fees would have to accommodate whatever or offset their time. A lot of the restrictions there, like closed to the public, no onsite consumption, I think that's all, that's all great. A lot of those prohibited activities there. Do we have something in that would require like some signposting there, saying, hey, there's no onsite sales, those type of things like that? So, or could we, could we put that into, into the conditions or into the code?
I think there's prohibitions that it's even identifiable as a medicinal cannabis location, so there's no outside signage identifying what it is. So signage to say that there's no onsite sales would be kind of defeatist of that.
Right. Well, that's where I'm going, is it basically have nondistinguishable markings on the building, those type of things like that. So it kind of, it operates, but it, but there's nothing kind of advertised in it, so you don't get those walk-up customers and those type of things like that.
I believe that's how it's written correctly, Chris?
I believe so. Yeah, it's supposed to be just the address and really nothing more than that. It's supposed to be very nondescript.
Yeah, and I think on page six, where you have signs of other services and things like that, can you share what is, what is meant by that provision?
Sure. Let me go there. Yeah, so signs shall contain no advertising of other companies, brands, goods, or services, and I can go to the ordinance. Yes, signs shall be limited to one wall sign consisting of the property address only. Signs shall contain no advertising of other companies, brands, goods, or services, and that's from the report, and I can also, let me, give me one second, I'll go to the ordinance.
And Commissioner Vrooman, that's consistent with our marijuana testing facilities requirement, that there shall not be any signage to prevent, you know, attraction to that use, so.
So that's where I'm going with that, is what, what does other sign, other services, is it the products that are contained inside the business versus, the next thing would be, what if you had an existing business that offered a different service? Hey, I'm, you know, so-and-so's automotive, and oh, by the way, I want to have a medical marijuana distribution area inside an existing business, right? So would that be permissible for somebody who lives in those, outside those zones that you identified, taking an existing business? Does it have to be exclusive to, to the medical cannabis delivery services? Or could somebody say, hey, I want, I want to combine it with a business that I already have existing? And so as you read this, it's like, well, you can't advertise Joe's Automotive at the same time. Is that the meaning of that? Or is it basically the meaning where you can't advertise the products of what is inside this medical cannabis delivery?
I believe the intent of the state was to assure safety. I would envision this as an individual business, if you will, not something that's like within another business.
So I think we could clarify that language, because it, yeah, I get what Commissioner Vrooman's getting at. It should probably say something like, signs shall contain no advertising of other companies, brands, goods, or services associated with this use type, because I agree with you, you could be in a scenario where maybe you have a location in the business park with a few different suites.
Right.
Right, and we're just talking about the one suite that this delivery business goes into, not the rest of the building.
Correct.
I'm fine with, yeah, I think that makes sense, if we clarify it that way in the code.
Yeah, I think that that would be a good clarification there. So then back to the other question. Could you have an existing business then that says, you know, I get it if they want to swap out, I'm going to shut down my automotive and swap out to this, right?
Right.
So that's, that's, that's totally separate, but having something, I do this plus this or, but, go ahead.
I think there might be some challenges with the security aspects, though, and you can't, right now, you, it, it'd also limit their ability for the public to come to the business location too, since we, since the way the code's written, you know, it's, this is really kind of a, more of an isolated type of use. You know, there's security issues, there's the, you know, the value of the product being stored there, so I, I don't really envision someone else wanting to do other activities there so much.
Well, so here's where I'm going with that, is that, could they, does our code or does it as written, or could we, could or should we clarify it? Could they store something else besides medical cannabis products? Hey, I want to store gold bars there, and so, or whatever it might be, plus this, is there, could we put something, so, no, this is, you're storing this and this only, and not anything else beyond that?
I think we can look into that, because part of the process is a review for fire, and fire has to look at the combustible qualities of the interior of that use. So I would say that in order to make sure that we're analyzing the right products within the right structure, I think we should find a way to cone down, you know, what you can and cannot do within that structure.
You know, gold bars isn't combustible, so I get the fire, that side of it, but what I'm wondering is, is do we as a city say, okay, hey, this is, this is clearly medical cannabis business, I don't have a side hustle, I'm going to store this, it's not combustible, whatever it is, right? And, and can we put in something and say, hey, it's exclusive to these type of products and not something else?
The state has looked into this as patient, facilitating patients' needs. I don't see anything else that was included in that law, so we'll look very carefully into that, Commissioner. I would like it to only speak to what the state legislation was approved for.
So would I.
And their state, and their state license also kind of has limitations on other activities there, I believe, so that would.
Right.
Kind of address some of that, so we'll, we can take another look at that, too.
Well, they might, like I said, hey, expand business operations and store something else there, and then that, that might be of more value, or I'm just kind of looking at it as something like, I go back to the gold bar analogy. Well, hey, I'm not there to kind of break in and steal your cannabis product, but hey, I am kind of interested in your gold bars, right? So I, you know, it's those type of things like that. I'm just kind of looking at what-if type of scenarios. The vehicles, you mentioned the vehicles there, and is there anything, and of course, we talk about the signage on the buildings, but what about the vehicles? What are they allowed to advertise, like so-and-so products, or, you know, can they have a wrapping, you know, around their vehicles that say, hey, this is whatever medical marijuana or cannabis delivery products, where the vehicles are all marked up coming out of the, you know, the non-conspicuous location? Can we, can we put those same kind of generic restrictions on the vehicles as well, too?
Yeah, I mean, they're not, they're not supposed to be advertising their product on a vehicle also, and I'm looking for the section here, but.
Right.
It's, I think, you know, we could, well, we can take a look at that. Let's, can we circle back to that one?
And Commissioner Vrooman, the way I read the law is that it's also meant to protect the delivery drivers themselves.
Correct.
That's very much part of it, and so I think that we'll search into that, but I believe that they are not inclusive of advertising for that basis, because these are folks that drive around to different communities, and you can only imagine, just driving through a community, that could be a significant optic for those that would take advantage of that. But we'll look closely into that, but I don't believe that there's, we can add, hopefully, through clarification, but I don't think that that's what the design of those companies are, because they want to, they have to protect their employees, and to advertise that, like, it's not, you know, a different type of thing, it's a very attractive thing for those that would want to steal or take that product away.
Correct. That's why I'm putting my crime prevention hat on and, and thinking, okay, well, maybe you're not advertising the cannabis business that you're coming from, but what if you get advertising dollars to the, some dispensary or what, something down the, down the street, right? Who, let's say that dispensary is in another city and whatever, and they gladly go around and advertise, but yet they want more people to make it seem like they have more of their product out there, right? So then they subcontract the advertising to, to the medicinal cannabis place, storage place, only in our city. So I think maybe having something that would just kind of prevent that in the future would be probably a good idea.
So provision for advertising.
Vehicle markings, advertising, yeah.
Okay.
Pretty much mimic exactly what you have on the buildings on the, on the vehicles as well, too.
One point of clarification, I guess, from City Planner Thoughts as we're having this discussion. We may be able to control the vehicle associated with that business that's registered in the city.
Correct.
But not the vehicles coming in from outside the city, making deliveries to that business
Correct.
Of product.
Correct.
Okay, just to clarify.
Right.
Okay.
No, I get it. I just, if, if those vehicles and that business is permitted, you know, has a permit through our city, but yet they decide, hey, I'm going to take advertising dollars, and it is, it is a vehicle that we regulate, but they're doing, you know, coming from that location, not going to.
Right, and they may be getting product delivered from somebody else that's.
Sure.
True-living things to them, and we can't control that business.
Right. There's one provision in there, it talks about no product can be, remain in a vehicle without the, without the driver, which I think is good. Now, what if that driver's making a delivery, and they get out of the vehicle and they go up to somebody's house for the, the purpose of this? Okay, they left it out in their vehicle, as I'm splitting hairs, I know it, but this is, this is something that's kind of worth, either we describe it to saying, hey, unless making a, you know, getting out of the car and making a delivery, because I don't want to catch them like, you know, in violation because they stepped three feet out of the vehicle and they, you know what I mean?
Well, I think we could also maybe modify it to have, you know, if there's multiple deliveries, to have another employee in the vehicle.
That's another option.
And also, Commissioner Vrooman, I think what I've been reading online is that the drivers actually don't get out of their vehicle, that the customer has to come to the vehicle to get the product. I think that's part of protecting the delivery driver, because once you walk out of that, all that commodity is just sitting there.
It gets carjacked or whatever. So in, in doing so, then should we put something in the, or saying, saying just that, saying, you know, the, the customer has to come to the driver, or somehow to kind of address that?
I want to double-check the law and how it's written, but I think that came about in the last couple of years, is they identified drivers that did present to the front door.
Right.
Or actually robbed by that.
Yes.
So I think that's why they came up with a GPS and a way to validate who that customer was, but to prevent theft that was going on like in Los Angeles.
Right.
Often, I think that's why they maintain the driver, but let staff double-check that in the record, because I'd be more than happy to see that the driver's not leaving the vehicle. If they are allowed to leave the vehicle, let's tighten up the screws on that.
Well, or could we have it say, I guess I would offer, could we have it say, an employee shall remain with the product in the vehicle when deliveries are made?
Then it requires two people, one has to stay and one can go.
But it allows them the option, whichever.
Right.
What, if they want, they have somebody they want to have that happen, or if they want people to come up to the vehicle, allow them to do either way.
Right.
Right? Yeah.
Two, the other ones are kind of, this is kind of city attorney, maybe a little bit of some constitutional. There's one in there, and you'd probably be surprised having it come from me, but the police department can check the GPS. Okay, so. Okay, so is there a reason that that might be needed, you know, you know? I I'm putting my conspiracy theory hat on, you know, it's like, okay, well, I wanna find out who all the customers are in the city, and that's not gonna happen, right? Because they don't have the time and energy to do that. But you could see, maybe, is it, does it have to relate to some type of. Investigation that they're doing, some type of criminal investigation, or or the purpose behind. Pulling that GPS information or requiring it to be submitted to them.
So kinda two questions there of.
Right.
Can they impose, can we impose this requirement? And I say absolutely, yes, we can. It's just a, it's got, you know, re- a reasonable relationship to the regulatory needs of it. The second part of it is how that information is used, and that would be a department policy issue. I don't know if they're gonna squeeze this into existing uh policies on 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 how that's used or disclosed. But um, but that's can cer- certainly be developed. I, I, as you mentioned, I don't think the city has any interest in.
No.
In anything other than should a crime occur, being able to to track that.
It it, but as as written, it just says the police department can get, obtain the GPS information.
Upon request, yeah. They have to, they have to turn that over if they, if the police ask for it.
And just leaving that open blanket, hey, they can just ask for it, or like what you first said, is like, it has to be tied to a reasonable. Or some type of an investigation. I guess maybe a.
No, it's open right now that they, they a- a- ask for it and they have to hand it over, and if they don't, that's a, that could be a violation of their license and their permit. The idea here is that police doesn't wanna have to go through a lengthy process to try to acquire this information.
Totally get it.
If the regulated business doesn't want to cooperate, then they may lose their license as a result.
So so we're okay just saying, hey, if the police department wants it for, they don't have to state a reason, they just want that GPS information. Then they can get that that GPS information.
I I think in the interest of public safety, yeah. I mean, I I think as as, I think that's what our residents would would want. Is the police to have that expi- you know, expeditious ability to get that information if it's a life safety issue, public safety issue, yeah, we'd want that.
Keep in mind, the the compelling of this is, the only recourse is the revocation of the permit. If that business says, no. They're not being charged with a crime for that, they're not, it's, that's not, the only recourse the city has at that point to say, okay. Well, then you can't have a license. So it's 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 tied directly to the license, it's not uh otherwise compelling them to turn over information. It's just like the security camera footage, I believe, is similar, uh similarly worded, right?
Yeah, it has to be available for thirty days.
So if something were to happen and the PD says, well, let me see your camera footage, they say no.
Right.
That's a a license issue, but.
I'm all good with it, I just wanna make sure it's, you know, fits within that. It it fits within the, you know, that somebody's not gonna, you know, make an issue over over that, so. Yeah, which you never know, right? But I just wanna make sure that we're comfortable with.
You never know, but they're not being compelled to do so, they.
Right, they're doing it willingly in order to get the.
To maintain their regulatory.
Similar to the massage sort of requirements we have, which is similar kind of in, you know, we wanna see that information and we ask for it, and if they don't wanna provide it. Then they don't get to operate their business.
Another, probably a city attorney question has to do with uh, can the business lawfully have firearms on the property? Separate from store firearms, maybe eh they, maybe they feel the need for uh protection or whatever. As opposed to having a uh an armed security ga- guard on site would be one thing, but to to have guns on on site there.
So it's not in our regulation, the question here would be, is it under the state regulation? Because remember, this has to have a state issued license, m- m- medical marijuana cannabis delivery license.
Right.
In order to operate, too. So that could be, I'm not, but I just don't know offhand if that's part of the state licensing or not.
So if it's, if it's, if it's unaddressed in the state, my thought would be. To add some type of provision in there, saying, hey, you can't have basically. Just unattended firearms there on the site, um loaded firearms, unattended, loaded or unloaded. You know, unless you wanna employ a armed security guard, that would be different. You know, because you have now somebody tied to that and they're licensed by the state, and and many dispensaries, those t- they have armed security guards there. But but to have that, say, hey, like, I own the business, I'm just keeping this here, I've got shotguns, I've got this, that and the other, in case something happens. They're not, maybe they're not even a CCW um permit holder, uh but they're just storing firearms. I I just kinda look at, something could go wrong, but I didn't know if that had been addressed or if you knew.
I don't know offhand, I don't know if staff does, but if not, we can add that to the list of things to 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 look and verify.
I I don't know offhand, but I would imagine, you know, it's gonna be uh around their state license a- as far as the scope of that. You know, it, and you're correct, um, some facilities uh that I, you know, write about, they do have a armed security. So that's, you know, within that uh framework.
Which is, which is, I think, more appropriate to have somebody that's accountable, that, hey, this is their job, right, is to protect. As opposed to the person that owns it there, and then we tell them, oh, we don't, you don't have to, or you can, or we don't. We don't at least address it somehow either. We we defer it to the state and refer to a state code that says this is not allowed. Versus um, we say, okay, the state doesn't say anything, so then we're gonna put that i- in our code, right?
Right.
You mentioned the taxes, um, and that is something that would, that would come at a later time, I suppose, if we had an applicant come through and actually do this. And then would it come through us or go straight to council, and then they would establish some type of a regulatory tax, or how, what would be that process?
The tax issue would go straight to council.
Good, okay. So they would take a look at, do we have any, any um applicants uh that have inquired or?
We don't currently, um, I, s- our neighboring jurisdiction to the north uh has, I think, three. Locations, those are the recreational type, and they do have um a s- you know, a sales tax agreement with that city.
Okay, sounds good. Captain Henry, are you good with everything? Okay.
Mitigating them as a target.
Mike, please.
Sorry, not used to this.
Yeah.
Mitigating them the best we can as being a target is, I think, our biggest concern, and I think it is addressed with the lack of advertising that's allowed. Of no onsite sales, and those are, when you bring that type of stuff, that's where you bring, you know, publicity to yourself, the people that wanna rob you, so. As of what we're looking at right now, I'm I'm comfortable with it.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Uh, Captain Matt Henry with the Marietta Police Department.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I assume that you had the, you committee of yourself and others that probably took a look at this and just looked at all the different provisions and, you know. Thought this out.
Yes, Captain Phil Gomez took the lead on it, and uh we've been conversing back and forth about it in the meetings with uh Mr. Tracy here.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right. All right, that's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner.
Thank you, and thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
I'm not really familiar with this concept. I know, I'm really familiar with Uber Eats. But I'm not familiar with this delivery concept, so is this a situation where it's. It's being delivered to people's residences, or is it going to other dispensaries that they need medical marijuana there?
It it goes to um people's residences and their, or if they have a caregiver, um to that caregiver to give to that person. Usually it's for patients that are recovering from sort, some sort of illness, um, you know, it's uh that type of thing. It is, eh, if it's between two businesses, both businesses have to be owned by the same operator. So if they have, you know, multiple locations, it has to be the same, the same operator as as structured in the ordinance.
Okay.
And it's, it's um largely, it's online orders, very similar Uber Eats and that sort of thing.
So it is kinda like Uber Eats.
It, yeah, I mean.
With the prescription.
Just to be clear, that exists right now today.
What does?
The delivery of of cannabis to personal residences.
Yeah, I assume it did, I just never heard of it.
The change here is that we would have, or could have, that there's a potential for a distribution hub to be in the city. As opposed to it just being driven in from outside the city, but in that context, it would be medicinal only. As of right now, today, it can be delivered into the city from outside the city on a recreational basis, so it's pretty open already.
Thank you for that. Um, if I understand, based on the ordinance. Practically any zone um would be allowed to have this. Or did I misread that? Is it only commercial?
Only the business park, uh Commissioner Wojcik, yeah.
Okay, I misread it.
So only the business park, and I believe um, and yeah, as staff shows here, Chris can walk you through it. But it's essentially the light blue areas there that you see. Um, we we thought of this. In the context of, this is where we were allowing the marijuana testing, under the the testing ordinance we did five years ago. So and and then this is a wholesale storage and distribution type use, so it fits with that zone.
Okay.
Um, and then, as you can see here, we worked on coming up with some buffers to the the sensitive uses, which you see. Uh, sensitive uses are kind of in the dark gray, and then the buffer is the the cross-hatched little outline bubbles around them. So that's giving you, uh, it gives us a setback from these sensitive uses, you're not getting a, you know, a cannabis distribution. Right next to a daycare, or, you know, right next to a a school or something like that, which um is an approach we we think is a better way of. Looking at these uses, so we, so we have some buffers.
And you can tell from that image, too, the the five hundred foot buffer, if if that was a thousand feet. And those shaded, black shaded areas were doubled in size, there would be practically no available business park parcels. That would be eligible for a site, uh, which would be contradictory to the state law, so we would not be in compliance in that case.
Thank you for that, because I was gonna ask if we could bump it to a thousand feet.
So so having recently dealt with this kind of thing with with HCD, another state department. I would advise against trying to make it too difficult for a, let's say, a business that's that's regulated by the state to come in. Because we don't really wanna draw the ire of a state department and have them tell us what they think we should do. We'd rather say, this is what we think works for us. Staff, I guess, I think staff's position, Chris can expand on it, but a five hundred foot buffer is pretty significant. We don't really have buffers like this for other uses in the city. Uh, having worked in other jurisdictions, we we've had buffers like this on on things I've worked on before. Mr. Tracy and I both worked in jurisdictions before that allowed marijuana facilities, and we had buffers like this. And they do work um to keep the the uses separated. So we think these are, these are adequate, but we'd be, you know, we'd be willing to hear what the commission's ideas are on that. But we also wanna be careful that we are allowing enough sites, as the city attorney mentioned, we don't wanna put ourselves in a situation where. There really are no sites, and then the ordinance isn't really doing what it's supposed to do, which is allow for the use.
I'd be curious to see, like, different maps that show five hundred versus like six hundred versus a thousand, just to see. How uh, I guess, exclusive it becomes based on the different uh.
We did look at a thousand feet, and it was uh extremely restrictive. We, it, you know, we have to sho- show something that's reasonably achievable for someone, um, kind of in the eyes of the state. So, eh, you know, I, I think here there is some opportunities there, so it. It it does provide a balance um between that option and and having those buffers, at least as those sensitive uses. Um, as we have concentrations of those sensitive uses in certain areas.
Okay. The the license the facility has, is that owned by a a individual, or would the either. Corporation or LLC that actually is probably running the business own that license?
All all entities would have to be um, are subject to the background search, uh, or background um. Type of investigation as, and they'd be all uh listed as part of the application process, so they'd be all responsible. So they couldn't hide behind a company uh for this type of thing.
But the, do you know if the license that they get from the state, is it required to be licensed to an individual?
Individual.
Okay.
Or individuals, but yes.
Okay, and so um. I s- I I note in there, and I think uh Commissioner Veuven brought this up, about the background checks. It, isn't that already required under the licensing requirement with the state? Are we just duplicating that effort?
They are doing a a background search, I don't know what level offhand, um, but I I believe that is part of their application process with their state license.
I guess my question is, if the state goes ahead and issues the license, they do their background. But then we run our own background and we say, no, you don't qualify.
There, there could be a gap in time, so um, you know, they may go to the state, come to us a couple of months later, here's my state license. In that timeframe, something happened with one of those operators, you know, and and there's an issue there, so that's. Kinda where I could see this would be a a second chance to catch that issue.
So it's not like we're gonna establish our own independent criteria. The criteria we're gonna use for our background will be the identical to what the state already imposes?
Maybe, do you know anything about our criteria? I would imagine it'd be similar to like our massage establishments, um, and in the type of. Databases we use for that.
Commissioner Wojcik, I I could just, you know, from past experience, that I think, correct me if I'm wrong. Maybe the 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 business owner is is the one that the state, that the state obtains the license, right? But is it the employees of the business that's regulated more with the city?
Yeah, so Commissioner Veuven, I wanted to get at that, that's what's in the ordinance. The ordinance says, background check, all owners, operators, partners, investors. Employees and agents must submit to a background check. So the difference here, the pe- people applying for the license might be one or two people. But then everybody who works at this facility is gonna do a background check, so that's the di- that's the significant difference there. So like, if they've got ten employees, they're all gonna do a background check, too, here with us, when they come in to get the city permit. And they may not do it with the state.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm wondering is, okay, let's say you have a business and you have five employees, and three of them are felons, convicted felons. But the establishment's allowed to have their license under the state, but you have these employees that are felons, then we deny the permit?
They, they're, they can't be employees.
If they were felonies of moral turpitude, not every felony.
Okay, so if it's a felony of moral turpitude, that employee would be prohibited from working at the establishment?
That's correct.
Okay.
Under the, under our current regulation, as proposed.
Okay. If the applicants, the license they get from the state, do you know if they have to renew it on an annual basis? Or is it a one and done?
I believe it is annually, from what I remember. Um, they do have to report, um, I believe on a daily basis, their inventory logs. So it's, it's very closely monitored by the state, uh, from what I recall.
If if they have to rea- I guess, I don't know, reapply or submit an uh application every year, renew it every year. Should we require that they have to submit that renewal to us as well?
It could be part of the renewal application, because we also will require a one-year uh renewal um as part of.
I would probably add that.
Yeah.
As a requirement, anytime they resubmit, they should resubmit it to us.
Yeah, it's, and it, it's very similar to the massage as um types of uses, they have to um identify the Camtech. Renewal as part of their application renewals, is what, you know, just something that's um kinda parallel.
I'd like to go to the ordinance, because I had a couple of questions from some of the language. Excuse my voice, I've been talking all day, so it's starting to, starting to go.
I can confirm it's an annual license with the state.
You can or cannot?
I cannot, I can, I just verified that it's an annual license.
Yeah, I just think it's a good idea, if they have to submit, they should submit it to us, just so you guys can see if there's anything funny going on. So, under item seven, that's the definition of medicinal cannabis. And it um, it talks about um. It's by a medicinal cannabis patient in California who possesses a a physician's recommendation. Is that another word for prescription?
Correct, prescription.
Should we change it to prescription? Because I don't know what recommendation means.
That's the term that's used in state law for cannabis, because prescription has particular federal uh uh meaning. And cannabis is still prohibited from being prescribed.
Okay.
By a doctor, so California law uses the word recommendation.
Recommendation, okay. I don't understand the rest of that sentence, though. And mind you, I'm a simple man. Um, it says, or in compliance with any compassionate use, equity. Or other similar program administered by a lo- local jurisdiction, are we talking? Are we talking about like hospice? I have no idea what that means.
I think it's speaking to, you know, local jurisdictions that have, you know, other provisions, you know, for implementation of the pro- of, of that type of, you know, uh.
I mean, I'm just thinking if I'm getting medicinal marijuana, cannabis, sorry. It would come from a physician recommendation. What other, what's the other time it would come other than through physician recommendation? And can we be more, more specific if there is another situation?
I think this language is copied right from the state laws on the Compassionate Use Act.
Yeah, I'm looking at it. This is what's in the state law, yeah.
Yeah, but state legislatures never make any sense either.
Right, but by dovetailing them that we ensure our own compliance.
So I'm just trying to figure out what the heck that means.
You know, some other cities, uh, might have a different type of process, you know, outside of that, which is.
I mean, if none of us can come up with an answer, we should probably just strike it.
Uh, Commissioner.
I hate to pass something that I don't know what it means.
No, but given, I agree with you that, uh, it's hard to read policy and law sometimes. But this could be applicable to even tribal governments and other things that we're not thinking about today. Because this is all rooted in Prop. 215 that was approved in 1996.
Right.
Uh, that was co-authored by Dennis Perone. That was really meant to help people with significant physical issues. Um, I think what they're trying to do is make sure that when they use terms like equity, that's basically environmental justice, to make sure that there's no situation where a patient would be not able to access, um, their medications. I, I think that's what the policymakers might be trying to do. We can look into that a little bit more, but it, it does seem a little bit gobbledygook, but.
Yeah.
I, I think it's rooted in patient care and patient advocacy, uh, for health. I, I think that's where I always go back to when I look at this, how they're writing this, uh, law.
Yeah, I don't know. Um, I guess that's what happens when you have a bunch of lawyers in Sacramento, huh? Yeah, I, I just, it doesn't make sense and I just hate to say yes. I like the language when I, I don't even know what it really means myself, that's all. And then, under, another page number. There's a requirement in here, insurance requirements that there's to provide and maintain insurance in amounts and the types that are acceptable by the city manager or they're designee. And I guess, is this for, uh, liability insurance? Are we looking to, are we looking to name the city as an additional insured in their policy?
It's typically what I've seen is liability insurance. Uh, we require $2 million typically, or a million depending on, on what it, what it is. This is, um, something that we require with our short-term, uh, vacation rentals, um, as a standard type of thing. At least for, in that example, we require a million dollars of personal liability insurance.
Okay. Should we have a requirement the city's named as an additional insured since we're imposing that requirement?
I think I'd have to defer to the city attorney on that.
I'm sorry, I was researching the other issue.
That's okay.
Uh, what's the question?
So the question is, there's an insurance requirement that there's to cover, uh, to obtain liability insurance. I think you said $2 million or whatever the amount what is. Should we also in as a requirement, name the city as an additional insured?
I'm not sure why. They're not doing work for or on behalf of the city.
Why are we requiring the insurance?
To, for third-party, uh, liability and make sure that they're, that anybody else is protected. Should, should injury come, should one of their drivers cause injury to somebody, that that third party is protected. But additional insured is when somebody is doing something on behalf of the city to protect the city and make the city insured. But in this case, there's nothing, there's no reason that this fit. Somebody would be coming after the city for money from a liability imposed by them. So that.
That was the only reason I thought it was in there.
Point of, doesn't make sense why it would be in there.
Yeah, that's why I'm wondering why it's in there, that's all.
It, it, it is in there?
Not, not naming the city as an additional insured, just requiring the insurance.
Oh, yeah. Re- requiring insurance is just like the state requiring you to have auto insurance. It's not to protect the state. It's to protect, uh, make sure other people are protected should you do it. So our requirement for, uh, one of these retailers to have insurance is to ensure that the general public is protected from their activities.
Do we require the insurance in all permits for all businesses?
No, but highly regulated ones like this we might. We don't require regulatory business license for all businesses either.
Right, there, there are some businesses that we require insurance, yeah. It's just.
I mean, to me it makes sense because of the delivery aspect.
And the law enforcement and public safety aspect.
I don't see the liability there, but I could see the vehicles on the road.
That's probably the biggest one.
Yeah. But then if there's other businesses that have vehicles on the road.
If there's the vehicles on the road, there's the, the robbery theft issues, uh, on the road or in front of people's residences. It's a high-risk business. So the, the city requiring a high-risk business to carry certain levels of insurance is, is reasonable in a regulated environment like this. But not, not an additional insured endorsement for the city. That one doesn't make sense to me.
And then my final question is in terms of the, uh, the, the sensitive zones. I see the ordinance lists those. Should we include, uh, hospitals and medical clinics as part of that?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Commissioner. We could add that. Medic, like, uh, medical facilities that, that are allowed in the business park. We could allow, we could put that in there. Yeah, but that, we can do that before we move forward with it.
That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Yep.
Vice Chair Harlan? Lots of details and specifics, thank you. Just a couple of things. The, in reading through SB 1186, it states that it prohibits several local bans and restrictions, including the establishment of physical premises from which retail sale by delivery of medicinal, medicinal cannabis within the jurisdiction is conducted by a licensed non-storefront retailer. I noticed in the presentation, um, that their city police powers. I guess my question is, given the SB 1186 language on restricting bans and restrictions, are we confident that the city police powers provide coverage to apply zoning requirements? And are we comfortable with the business park designation, um, sticking? So that there's no case made for perhaps another designation? I guess that'd be a legal staff question.
So yes, uh, to the first part, um, but with the nuanced answer of what I was kind of getting at earlier in that you're right, the law says we cannot prohibit the physical establishment of a premises. So if the zoning is such that it effectively zones out and prohibits the use, that would be in violation of this law. So, uh, one of the things if we're adding, uh, medical facilities to this list, we're going to need to remap that. That may affect the way that map looks. If it foreclo- forecloses a majority of the parcels in the business park zone, we may have to open up and look at other zones, uh, to include as well. So what staff has brought before you right now, uh, I think is legally sound. There's a number of, of open parcels and, and, uh, locations where these businesses can, can, uh, set themselves up. But, so we're not prohibiting it and we're in compliance with this. However, some of the recommended changes may affect that and may alter that as, as this moves forward and develops.
Appreciate that. Similar to Mr. Verman, when I first looked at the verbiage with this, right, is, is our verbiage as we're putting this forward, are we going to be able to avoid someone trying to set this up working from their house and/or a business backroom? And it sounds like we've got that covered, right? So if I got a UPS store, or let's say I've got a quick service restaurant and maybe I breakfast, lunch and dinner, maybe one of those is slow or I'm not open. Hey, here's an incremental business opportunity for me. From what it's, appears that we have here, those instances would be excluded, correct?
Correct. The use tables have been updated to reflect, uh, the delivery hub, uh, item as well as the delivery activities. So, um, that's provided in the ordinance and it's pretty explicit.
Okay. The, looking at the proposed cannabis delivery business, she'll be located 500 feet from residential, public or private schools, daycare centers, public parks, youth activity centers. Solid list. Initially I was thinking, well, you know, is anything here perhaps close to a freeway on or off ramp ac- access due to potential for, uh, potential crime escape routes? But if, and looking at the map, it looks like we've avoided those?
Yeah, and I, I would also add, um, Front Valley Parkway as it is right now, it's only an off ramp. So, um, if someone's traveling further south, they would be, um, going on the freeway at Winchester. It's highly congested, uh, most of the time, you know, in that area. So, um, I think there would be very limited opportunities.
Get in and out quick.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Youth activity centers, does that include mulligans, escape rooms, bowling alleys, movie theaters? What, what exactly does that entail?
Yeah, I would say, um, you know, a, a business activity where their, you know, their primary clients are youth, like trampoline parks, um, dance facilities, um.
Martial arts.
Martial arts, karate.
Batting cages?
Stuff, batting, yeah.
Yes.
You know, uh, batting cages.
Okay. With the, um, very solid comprehensive list for managing and regulating the delivery business, um, when you were showing some of the driver's slides of what they were supposed to carry, maybe it's just an assumption, but I didn't see that the drivers are required to carry proof of insurance. Which, which led me to believe are these, the drivers assumed to be employees of the company, independent contractors?
I think that's required by law anyway. You're driving a vehicle that's licensed in the state, you gotta have insurance.
Which I assumed, I just didn't see it listed on.
Yeah, I don't think we need to have that in there.
Yeah, the, the business will have to have its insurance. The insurance carrier is not going to permit employees to, you know, not have insurance to be able to operate the vehicles.
Will the delivery drivers be employees or independent contractors?
I believe that would be up to the employer.
Okay.
Yeah, because we have the new 1099 with the new delivery companies. That's been subject to new state laws requirements, but I think that's something that's up to the, um, employer.
Okay. The business is prohibited from cultivating, manufacturing and producing the inventory? So that said, the inventory they're going to receive to sell needs to be delivered. In the staff report, the guidelines that we had, there wasn't anything specific on inbound. Is there anything that we should perhaps include for regulating or restricting inbound deliveries? Or perhaps we can't? Just a thought.
I don't think there's too much we could do with that. The inbound area is going to be required to be in a, you know, a secured area, um, as it enters the business. We're going to have required lighting, um, security cameras, um, you know, on that area. That's where it's coming in. So I think all those types of, um, concerns would be addressed, uh, through those other requirements. Their state license is also going to kind of dictate where that inventory is coming from as part of that, uh, track and trace program. The operator's going to have to do a daily inventory log with the state database. So I think we have all that kind of covered as far as that goes.
Okay. Just the, uh, the last part here, um, kind of tying into that mentioning of the driver not leaving product and vehicle unattended. I think picking it up from the vehicles, um, if that's the case is fantastic. But I've got delivery and warehouse hub, uh, background for, for a number of years. And I know traditionally, we always like to group the orders, right? The expense of doing a, a one drop-off, um, you know, got it, um, but it's also very expensive. It's generally, orders are grouped. It's the furthest order out is the first one you deliver, then you hit everybody coming back to the warehouse. So perhaps verbi- and we see, we see Amazon doing that right now as well too, right? So perhaps something in there about, you know, if there's more than one delivery, perhaps there's, there's a second person in the vehicle. Just a thought.
Comment noted, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good stuff.
Thank you, Commissioners. A couple of questions. Can you take me through the process in a very overview of what starts this medicinal, uh, delivery? How does it get delivered? And who is the person who regulates that this person needs that delivery?
Well, I mean, it would start at a, from a cultivation facility, uh, be processed, uh, you know, and manufactured, in a other location outside of our area. It would, you know, be trucked in by a licensed operator. They'd have to have a state license also. And as I mentioned, it would be, you know, received in a secured area at a location. You know, with all the parameters for, you know, security, lighting. And the, the personnel, you know, would have to, you know, have our, our license, uh, our city license and, and operate under that framework.
Well, I'm more interested.
Yeah, let me help out. So then on the, on the resident side, right? A, a resident would get a prescription or I guess a recommendation. As Commissioner Wojcik found out, they would get a recommendation that they can utilize medicinal cannabis.
From a doctor?
Correct, uh, Chair. And then they would find that this facility exists. Let's say one is permitted in the city. So they would connect with this facility. I would assume they could do that through their doctor or online or call them. One of those options, just like any of us do when we get a prescription. So then they would set up the delivery, right? And then, um, and then they, they can then have it delivered either to their home or to their caregiver's ho- location. It's according to the ordinance. And the, the product can be delivered to them or their caregiver who's taking care of them. And, and that's the, how the delivery works.
And Chair, the, the technology about the, the GIS is that when the patient is requesting that product, usually it's through their cell phone. And then they provide their documentation, like a copy of, of their cert, uh, along with any other information they're asked for, like a, a license so that they can be identified when they present to the vehicle. As the delivery service is coming to their home, uh, they're getting updates on the tracking and the time amount. So there's some certainty there. The tracking helps make sure that someone knows where the driver is and the patient knows that that specific delivery driver is from the company that they're purchasing it from. So I think the state has found a way to lessen some of the safety issues, both on behalf of the driver and for the patient. But I think it's really an automated process. A lot of us order, you know, a new washer online and it comes in three days. And I think that's, it's a very simplified process like that, if that helps.
Okay. How does the facility, that this one facility that we're going to have in the city, how do they get their product?
Well, the current facility is just a testing facility. They, they don't operate under this framework at all.
No, I know the current one is a testing. But I'm saying someone comes and applies for this, they're going to have a facility. How are they going to get their product?
From a licensed state distributor. So it, you know, it'd come in from, um, that warehouse offsite. These are only limited to 3,000 square feet, also I should add, in size. So, you know, we're not, we're talking about a smaller type of, uh, warehouse, uh, type of thing. So these would come from a, a larger location that's licensed by the state.
And, uh, Chair, it's, it's all, most of this is, what we understand is prepackaged. So it would be like ordering from amazon.com, like, you know, four sheets for your bedroom. You, you know, it's similar to that where it's prepackaged, um, pre-labeled, uh, and priced out in advance. So I think that simplifies it for the consumer. Because again, they're looking online at a menu like you would for, you know, food order. And they're making selections on that of different products. There's different types of things that they can purchase. But I think that's where, um, it's come back down to a very automated process for them. And they just simply, the companies buy this themselves and get it delivered to their business.
Okay. Loitering, how is that going to be enforced in this facility area? Do you know it? Is the police department going to enforce that? Is the building owner going to enforce that? The employee going to enforce it? How is that going to be handled?
I would say all of the above. If the employees are calling because they're hinged up because somebody's standing outside their door and they're worried about a safety concern, they call us, we'll absolutely go. We'll absolutely go. If we see suspicious activity on our own, we'll investigate it. So really, in the same manner we would for any, any other location.
Thank you very much. So the questions I have right now. So, let's go on to the next step, which would be an applicant, but we don't have an applicant, right? So we don't have to make a presentation from that standpoint. Madam Secretary, I'm going to open up the public testimony at 7:10 PM. Do we have any public comments, starting with proponents, opponents, and then those that are neutral, in that order?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Seeing none, public testimony, I'm going to close it at 7:11 PM. Any further discussion by any of the Commissioners up here on the dais regarding this pro, this subject matter?
I, I think it's good, and I just want to comment, a lot of good work and thought in, in that. My only, I got a couple, couple little suggestions as far as some cleanup of some existing stuff in there. I don't know, Mr. Sir, Mr. City Attorney, if I need to, you know, incorporate, you know, asking staff to do that in, in a motion. But then there's one that's not addressed, which is the, the firearms, addressing the firearms of what, what can be allowed in order for us to, what the state addresses or doesn't address, and for us to actually add that in, in a motion if it's not already in there.
Right, so this is just a recommendation at this point. So your motion could include things that you recommend, or changes that you recommend, and, and staff will, when they bring this motion, or when they bring their new ordinance up, will either incorporate those if they agree with you, or have something different or modified version, but your recommendation would still go up as your recommendation. Just staffs might be different. But you can incorporate that into the motion. You can, you, you can put it right here into your deliberation, share your concerns so that they can write them down. And then we can try to generalize them and reference them later when the motion is needed. That might be easier. And then the, the last way, which is probably the difficult way, I hesitate to mention it, but I got to give you all your options, is, you know, if, if nobody made a motion to move forward a recommendation, you could ask them to bring, staff to bring it back and, and see those changes before the recommendation went forward. I think they're pretty minor ones that you're suggesting right now, so I don't know that that's necessary, and I think it's in the city's best interest to get this moving forward as quickly as possible.
Whatever's easiest for staff.
Yeah, but I, I do feel compelled to make sure I give you all of your options, so. Yeah, I would recommend using this deliberation period to share with staff what your concerns are, so they make sure they have them all noted down, especially if they're ones that haven't been brought up yet. And then we'll help you craft that recommendation when the motion time comes.
Any other discussion?
So, the only problem, I didn't really keep a list. Oh, you did? Okay. The only thing I was going to have on that list was the definition, just some clarity on what that means, and hospitals and healthcare providers as part of the, as part of the list. You'll have to lead the charge, though, on a motion, because I don't know what's all, all entailed at this point.
Well, I think part of what I wrote down was, there was concern about storing only this product within that space of 3,000 square feet. So if that, you want to make that part of the motion, then there was firearms on-site issue?
Was that issue that the commission was desiring that there be no firearms on-site? Or only firearms should they buy, held by people licensed to carry them, or?
So that, that's what I was going to make a motion saying, you know, restrict firearms on premises except for, you know, licensed security guards that are licensed by the Department of Consumer Affairs, because that's who does it, and that's a state regulatory agency.
Then the other thing I wrote down was a policy for GPS usage, if that was necessary as part of this recommendation.
I don't think that, was there, was there, was there a commission desire to not have that GPS? I think we were just questioning how it worked, right?
Yeah, my, my thought is, as long as, if we require it, then, then my understanding, based on your explanation, was there's no constitutional issue if there's voluntarily saying, yeah, we're going to give the police department access to that information willingly as part of the permitting process, or else we just aren't getting a permit here.
That's right.
Okay. So there's no need to modify that.
And then on vehicle signage, to be no vehicle rap or vehicle signage? Was that in there?
The sign clarification is, we talked about it during the hearing, signs shall contain no advertising of companies, brands, goods, or services. And I was, the staff's recommendation was of this use, to limit the, the signs, because we were worried, concerned about if it's adjacent to another use, that it's only related to this use on the, on that sign provision under, what is it, visibility and signs.
Visibility and signs, yeah.
Yeah, so we can, we can, staff can add that language.
I think you also had a ask to add hospitals and medical facilities outside the buffer. I wanted to just ask, would that include, like, acupuncture and other minor medical? Are you looking at more the larger established facilities? I just want to clarify that, because in a business park, we might see those use types in that area. So I just wanted to double-check. When it comes to medical, that can be a big butterfly net, and I wanted to be careful there.
Yeah, Jared, I was thinking more of the medical profession, your PCPs, your specialists, hospital. I wasn't thinking about these alternative medicine-type things.
Perfect, because I want to prevent anything new that would create friction with the buffers that we're looking at.
Like an urgent care facility, that would be part of it.
That's helpful, thank you.
Any other discussion or debate? All right, it's now time to call for a motion.
So I would suggest, if somebody wanted to make a motion based on what we've just been discussing, you can move the recommended action as it's put in here, and just add that staff incorporate and consider the, the items that the planning commission has discussed here at the dais. And we, we just went through a list of them, so we have them on the record.
I'll go ahead and make that motion with staff's recommendation, and including staff research and restrictions of no firearms on premises, and I just wanted to add, or by the drivers as well, too. Something where there's no, is it, or another provision in there to, for staff to basically revise language regarding a cannabis-exclusive business, and what they can do there.
Signage?
Signage on the, on the vehicles, non-conspicuous on the vehicles. And their markings, or what type of advertising on the vehicles would or would not be allowed pursuant to state law. Also, the the hospitals and healthcare locations to be incorporated into, you know, the proximity within the 500 feet.
And the final one I have was the clarity of the medicinal marijuana definition. You want to include that one as well in your motion?
Yes, sir.
And I got one other one. The product with the vehicle, being in the vehicle, basically no, there always has to be an employee with the product.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, just clarification of what, what is and what isn't allowed.
And then one other, one other one was the exclusive storing only of the product within the space. No other product.
Correct. Direct staff to basically come up with some, craft some language to address those and, you know, as legally required, or that, that is allowable.
So Madam Secretary, do we need to read this recommendation?
I can do that for you, Chair. Recommendation is to adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Marietta recommending the city council authorize the filing of the environmental determination, approved development code amendment MCA 2023-0008, related to section 16.08.010, 16.10.010, 16.11.010, 16.12.010, 16.13.010, 16.14.010, and 16.44.250, for the establishment of medicinal cannabis delivery, location, and operational standards, and miscellaneous updates to the existing cannabis standards reflective of attachment 2.1, and including the recommended additional items of the planning commission heard tonight.
And that motion was by Commissioner Vrumen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second is by Commissioner Wojcik. Madam Secretary, could we get a vote?
Chair Fisher.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harlan.
Aye.
Commissioner Vrumen.
Aye.
Commissioner Wojcik.
Aye.
Commissioner La Paglia.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let's move on to the city planner comments. City planner comments?
No comments, and Happy New Year to all, and looking forward to a lot of work this year with, with the commission. Thank you. That's it for city planner. Back to you, Chair.
City Attorney comments?
No comments.
Any comments from the different planning commissioners?
No comment, just Happy New Year, and thank you.
And I express myself to Happy New Year, looking forward to a very successful 2024. And with the commission in place, we should have learned a lot in 2023 and applied to 2024. So Happy New Year, and I am going to ask for adjournment. Are we in agreement? Okay, this is being adjourned at 7:23 PM. Thank you all very much.